Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Thursday, September 7th regular session of the City of Kalamazoo Planning Commission. Thank you for coming tonight. Can we get a roll call?
Here.
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 DeSenzo.
Here.
Harrison. Milliken.
Here.
Patelco.
Here.
Pitts. Swan.
Here.
All right. Thank you very much. We have an agenda that was sent to us. Are there any changes and modifications to the agenda?
No.
Nope. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Swan, second by Patelco. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. We also were sent two sets of minutes. So we'll start with the first. Our July 20th regular session of the Planning Commission. Any changes, edits, questions, comments? All right. Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the July 20th minutes?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion by Curtis, support by Burgess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Then we also had the August 3rd minutes. Any questions or edits on those? No? Okay. Similarly, can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
Move to approve the August 3rd minutes.
Second.
Motion by Burgess, second by Swan. Any...all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. All right. Any communications and announcements?
Any communications and announcements were included in the packet in reference to the rezoning. There's no additional communications.
Okay. Well, then we'll move right to the heart of the agenda tonight, the public hearing. With all public hearings, we'll take public comment after the staff report and questions from the commission. We'll ask members of the audience to step forward. There is a...there's a sign-in sheet, is that correct? To sign in at the podium over there, maybe queue up on the right or your left side of the room, sign in before you come up. And then you'll have three minutes to give your comments, give your name and address for the record, and then hear your comments. We'll also be taking call-in comments to those listening on the YouTube channel. That phone number will be listed on the YouTube site, but for those listening, it's 888-382-9556. And we'll take those comments at the time. We'll also be having public comments later in the agenda for items that are not on the agenda. So anything not related to the rezoning or to the zoning ordinance amendments or other items on the agenda, we'll take those comments later on, both in person and online in the same process. So with that, we'll open up public hearing PC 2023.05, the recommendation to the City Commission to approve the text amendments to Chapter 50 zoning ordinance and Appendix A zoning, as well as the updates to the zoning map.
Good evening, commissioners. There we go. So this evening is a culmination of about the last six or seven months of discussions related to this round of updates to the zoning code, specifically focusing on commercial districts and commercial standards like signage and lighting and landscaping. We're going to talk about four things tonight. We're kind of four categories. The first is zoning and master plans and how they interact, specifically how it interacts with our 2025 master plan. We're going to talk about the outreach and engagement process that occurred over the last six or seven months. We're going to talk about the criteria that this body, that you all review zoning changes by, whether it is an applicant coming for a request for a property or it's the city coming forward with a larger request, the criteria are set for you to consider. And then we'll go over the proposed code and map details, which you at this point probably are very familiar with, given multiple presentations, including at the August meeting. So let's first talk about zoning and master plans. So zoning and master plans are intended to align with each other. The zoning code should implement the vision, at least as it relates to land use and some transportation tasks, is designed to implement what's in the master plan. We updated our master plan, it was approved in late 2017, and we started updating our code in 2018. What you have before you are some very specific things that are in the master plan, as well as our strategic vision, that relate to the zoning code. So the master plan specifically talks about updating the code as one of the tasks for staff, which is why we started it right away. And it talks very specifically about creating standards that really align land use and transportation and think about those two things together when thinking about place. The strategic vision is a document that lives above the master plan. It is broader. I say the master plan is like 10,000 feet up, the strategic vision's like 30,000 feet up above the city. There are five...we have 10 strategic vision goals for the city, and there are five that relate to the zoning work. The first is always going to be good governance. So good governance is making sure that we have codes and policies that are clear and easy to understand and implement. Part of this work is updating the code to achieve that. The master plan specifically calls out creating standards that think about complete neighborhoods. So these are neighborhoods that have multiple housing options within them, having opportunities for meeting daily needs or work or recreation. Connected city, this is very much tied to our transportation, being part of land use and creating a city that it can be accessed by all modes and giving choices to our residents. Of course, this is a commercial update, so thinking about economic vitality and making sure that the zoning code is not a barrier to economic growth and development in the city, while also guiding it to make sure that it is of the appropriate size and scale. And then finally, environmental responsibility. The Community Sustainability Plan, which was approved last year, called out some very specific things, as did the master plan, for incorporating into the zoning code. And we have worked to do those with this process. So I pulled out this page in the zoning code or from the master plan, and I've used this before, but this afternoon I kind of went through and I was going to highlight which of the specific subtasks we are working on with this update. Well, we actually hit all of them and, you know, have continued to hit all of them as we update our code over the last few years, but all of these are involved in the work that is before you tonight. So I mentioned that we started updating the zoning code right after the master plan. And we chose to do this zoning code update in an incremental fashion because it allowed us to work with neighborhood plans, it allowed us to work with smaller number of parcels and property owners and changes, which allowed us to really dive in and focus on those areas. And so we have been working on it slowly. We have the 2005 zoning code, which lives...all of our ordinances live in the municipal code. The 2005 zoning code was placed in Appendix A of the municipal code. As we have been updating it since 2018, we've slowly been pulling sections out of that document. I know I always say this, but it's like we run them through the wash, right? What needs to be updated, what needs to be added, what needs to be removed, and then the finished product goes into Chapter 50. So we're dealing with two documents right now. One is always getting bigger, one is getting smaller. So since 2018, we have worked on a variety of sections of the code, including creating new districts like the downtown districts, the live-work districts and nodes, which specifically came from some neighborhood plans. We've updated parking, we've had two rounds of natural features protection updates, cannabis has been included and then updated a second time. And last year, we spent some time with you, as well as some other bodies, to do a check of the zoning code as it existed at that time, to make sure that everything was operating smoothly and didn't need additional clarity or corrections, and anything that did, we updated last spring. So as I mentioned, we kicked off this process earlier this year, and this work started late February, early March. Outreach and engagement was done in March through May. We did a series of three meetings across the city, and I'll get into a little more detail about that in a second. We updated the draft based on those meetings and some staff research, put the document back out, draft two, had another meeting to discuss those revisions, repeated the process, edited based on those revisions, put it back out, and in August, we had a big presentation at this meeting on draft three, what had changed, where we've been leading up to the more formal meeting tonight. And that's where we are, September. This is a public hearing for this item, and you are looking at draft four, which is not significantly different than draft three. There are a few changes, but wanted to kind of clarify that a couple of things have been updated since the August meeting. This body, as you know, is not the final decision-making body for zoning ordinance changes. What you are being asked to do tonight is to consider recommending approval to the City Commission of these changes to the text and map of the zoning code. The City Commission will then take this matter up, regardless of how you review it, it still goes to the City Commission. The City Commission will then weigh your decision, weigh public comment, weigh staff presentations, and over the course of two meetings, make a final decision on whether or not these ordinances are approved. So when we talk about outreach and our review of the document, we grind...we grind...we ground ourselves in our public participation policy that the city has, which was created right after Imagine Kalamazoo master plan and that engagement process. And there are many ways to do...there are many ways engagement can happen and outreach can happen, depending on the type and scale of your project. So this zoning code update was...started off as a collaborative effort. We provided a first draft for reaction and comment, made edits based on that, repeated the process a couple of times, and moved into the informational stage of outreach and engagement, which is public hearing, here we are, here's what's proposed to be updated. And so that is how we move through that, and that's how we picked our activities for engagement throughout this process, is thinking about where we...that collaborative effort and then the informational effort. So these are the activities that we have done in that category, in those categories. When we kicked off this project, we put the draft was available online. We had an online interactive zoning map to kind of show how parcels may change. We sent letters to property owners and occupants of properties, inviting them to review this information, talk to staff if they had questions, and we set up a series of one-on-one meetings for anyone who was interested in discussing their property in particular, with staff to understand what changes might be being made and how it impact them. We did three outreach meetings this spring, April, May, and June, across the city, kind of east, central, and west parts of the city. And we have done a series of meetings at boards, natural features protection, of course, in front of the Plan Commission, and the City Commission, both the business meeting as well as the committee of the whole meeting. In June, we had a second come-all community meeting, which was the fourth meeting on the second draft, to outline the changes that had been made and talk about next steps. When we update an ordinance, particularly the zoning code, there are a lot of things that come into play. And all of these things come into play, and sometimes they contradict each other, and staff has to weigh the different pieces in each of the buckets. So we, of course, have community and public input. We have best practice, zoning best practice, staff research. We have our master plan and our strategic vision guiding us, and of course, state law and court rulings, which impact zoning in particular. And all of these things get weighed and get kind of run through the filter to ultimately create the draft that you have in front of you this evening. So as a body, you are tasked with reviewing an ordinance amendment, and it's an ordinance to both update the map and the text of the zoning code, and to remove text from Appendix A as it gets shifted into Chapter 50. There are five review criteria that you always see in your packets and you always see up here on the screen when you review a map change or zoning text change. And I want to talk about those tonight, as you can be thinking through them as we go through the rest of the presentation. The first is, are the amendments consistent with the master plan and strategic vision? And so staff believes that the answer to this is yes. The overhaul of the code not only aligns with the master plan, it was called for in the master plan. The future land use plan helped guide the map changes, and the public participation plan, which arose from the creation of the master plan, the strategic vision guided our outreach and engagement. The second review criteria are, have conditions change that require changes to the zoning code or map? So yes, with a new master plan, we need to make sure that our zoning code is properly aligned with it, and that's the number one change. We also have had a number of variance requests of different categories that impact how we've updated the code. For example, and there's another case in front of the zoning board of appeals next week, we've had quite a few challenges with our commercial office, our CO, and our commercial neighborhood districts, because they were written very narrowly and restrictive, and so we regularly have variance requests for those. And so that is a...you know, we kind of try to keep track of those and understand how the community butts up against those rules, and that helps impact, you know, whether or not we need to make changes. And of course, board comments and directions. So that's some of the changes that came from...that relate to the natural features protection ordinance came out of or born from conversations between staff, the natural features protection board, and their use of that document. Third, do the changes address community need? Again, the need is laid out in the master plan, the subsequent neighborhood plans talk about it when we work with the developers and the commercial community. And we have found, and I mentioned it a moment ago, that zoning, if not done thoughtfully, can serve as a barrier to projects moving forward. And we have definitely found that with a lot of our existing commercial and overlay districts that we have, that have provided challenges, often to the detriment, not only the detriment, but the stoppage of a project moving forward. And so those are things that we want to make sure that we are keeping in mind as we do this work. Four, the proposed changes are compatible with surrounding properties. One of the benefits of doing the zoning code in smaller chunks is that we really have had the opportunity to go lot by lot when we're looking at zoning map changes. Now, that does not mean that it is perfect. What it does mean is that we really took the time to understand where the parcel was located, how it's currently used, what the parcels around it, how they are used, and what impacts there are in order to make our changes to the map. And finally, will the changes result in logical and orderly development patterns? Again, staff says yes. We're working from the master plan, which lays out that...those patterns, and because these changes are rooted in the size, scale, and context of Kalamazoo, we are confident that will result in that logical and orderly pattern. So what is proposed to change with this update? And I know you all have heard this presentation, this is, I think, the fifth time, so I will try not to belabor any of the pieces, but I do want to talk through it in case there are folks who are just joining us for the first time in this process. What you have in front of you is the outline of the...or table of contents for Chapter 50. Anything that is in blue is a section that already existed in Chapter 50, but is seeing some edits. Anything in green are sections that exist in Appendix A and are coming over with some edits and review. And there are several subsections within those ones that are noted in blue that also exist in A and are just being moved over with some updates. First, I want to make sure that I touch on, we have kind of a pre-set of pages or spread at the top of the zoning code that talks about how to use the code. And what the section really is meant to do is intended to guide users for the order in which they should look at the standards. And so we talk about, you know, what is your permit...what is the zoning district you're in, what is your street type? Then go look at your use list, and then look at your zoning standards. And what was not in this section previously was natural features protection. We didn't...it was only base districts that we referenced people to. We want to include natural features protection because that is something that should be looked at right from the start to understand how to best guide development on that site. So general requirements. General requirements is a lot of that kind of intense, very code-y part of the zoning code. It is filled with definitions, and as you have been looking at the code as the section, this draft has evolved, the definition section has gotten very messy and reorganized and added to and renumbered. What we've done is renumber it so it is a little more clear. We have added details such as, you know, italicizing defined words, which seems, you know, not very exciting, but it does help in the clarity and usage of the code. We have updated street types in this proposed code update because we did our street design manual a few years ago, and so we needed to make sure that the street types that we use in site plan and have discussions with developers are what are in the zoning code. So it's adding those, and of course, those needed to be defined. The other thing to highlight in general requirements are those standards that are non-conformant standards, which is, you know, the code-iest thing that you'll kind of find language-wise in the zoning code. Non-conforming standards help to guide properties that were developed under previous legal code standards, so in prior documents, before they were changed. And they may not comply perfectly with the standards in the new code, and so what do you do then? And so this lays out how you handle, whether it's a use or a structure, or what we call it a site characteristic, which is not as major of an element as a building, but things like signs or your landscaping or a driveway. This section exists in Appendix A, some of it was already in 50, most of it existed in Appendix A. It is being moved over with some updated text and clarity changes. Zoning districts and maps. Of course, this section is seeing change because we are doing changes to both existing districts and adding new districts to the zoning code, including both base districts and overlay districts, and we'll talk about both of those. So a slide again that you have seen before. There are several districts in the zoning code. We have a lot of commercial-related districts. There are several that are being removed from the code because they have been collapsed or adjusted into some new districts or already existing districts. These are things like commercial office, commercial neighborhood office, commercial neighborhood one, commercial neighborhood two, which are CO, CNO, CN1, CN2, and then CMU and RMU, which are commercial mixed use, and residential mixed use. And these are mixed-use districts. We have more recently created our live-work districts, which are replacing these. Anything that you see here that's in gray on this slide are districts that exist in the code, in the text, but were never mapped anywhere. And so those are being removed as we have not used them up to this point and do not expect to in the future. There are several overlay districts that exist in that category. In fact, the only of those overlay districts that's mapped are the riverfront overlay districts. And there are nine of those that exist on the east end of town. They touch Edison, downtown, Northside, as well as the Eastside Neighborhood. And these are a set of standards. Remember, overlay standards sit on top of your base zoning and take precedent over the base zoning. And they have created a number of challenges over the years in that area to development. And so those are going to be removed with this code update. So removed from the map, removed from the text. Just a reminder, and we're going to talk about the standards in a minute, we have two types of zoning districts. So one follows form-based standards, which look at things like entrance, windows, a little more detail on placement on the lot. And we have standard districts, which we've always had, which are much more focused just on the general building envelope or the location of the building, where it's setback from all the property lines and what that looks like. And those are mapped in different locations, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Use section, the use article saw a lot of changes with this update. Most importantly, we had to add our new districts, and so we had to add those to the table. We also did try to do some updates for clarity, to be more obvious when things were a special use and when they weren't a special use. We updated...we added a new state-allowed cannabis license, which is microbusiness, Class A. We already allow microbusinesses in certain locations in the city. This is a variant on that license type, it has a different number of plans, and talks about slightly different production requirements, but in all of the...you know, in all...for all the intentions, it's, you know, the same type of business. So we added that because we needed to specifically call that out. We added restrictions to prevent intense uses as a turn-the-corner on residential streets, where in the past, we may have mapped CN or CO down a street as a way to transition. Now we can think about street type to make those transitions. It wasn't just the use table itself that got updated, we also updated the accessory use and structure table to add things like the keeping of chickens and rabbits, which already is allowed today. All we've done is take it from the municipal code in the animal section, added it to the zoning code, because it talks about how it can be placed on a lot. So that has been incorporated here. We made updates to vehicle service, and this is one we've talked about quite a bit. When we started this process, car washes were listed as not a special use in our CC, our community commercial district. Through public comment, we chose to remove that and keep it as a special use in the CC district. It is a special use in all the commercial districts. We made changes to outdoor, sales, and service, talked about the type of outdoor...read storage, the type of stor...like the type of materials that get stored, because this district...this use category thinks about things like both cars, as well as storage of loose materials, what qualifies for a loose material, where should that loose material be stored in relationship to the property lines or adjacent water bodies and so forth, and added those development standards to that section. And then in-home day And then in-home daycare is a home occupation, and so making it clear that that is, that's an accessory use, it's a home occupation, whereas the daycare center, the larger commercial use, is a kind of standard use, or listed in the standard use table and how that is I mentioned that we have, again, those two, when you talk about standards, Chapter Article Five talks about the standards, the physical standards for developing a lot based on the district. We have form-based and regular, or standard. The form-based are our live-work districts and our neighborhood node district and our downtown districts. And so again, in addition to use, our form-based districts, they're highly illustrated. Each district has a number of different lot types that are allowed. Each lot type has a set of standards with all the illustrations. And again, it takes things, it gets into a little more detail than just how you place the building on the lot. And these are designed to be in our more urban locations. These are locations that are easily accessible by multiple modes of transportation, so transit lines, good sidewalks, bike lanes, and car. So our more urban areas is what, where we have placed our form-based districts. Because when you think about building placement and design and that entrance and windows, those are things that help match some of those street characteristics that I just gave to help make an area active and vibrant and accessed by all those, you know, easily accessed by those modes of transportation. It's not just good streets. It's not just a nice building. It's got to be the combination of the two. Our districts that are not form-based, our areas, our community commercial, which is our largest commercial district, intended for proximity to highways, our largest fastest streets, and tend to be large lot development. Smaller, our CC2, our community commercial district, which is intended for areas that are either auto-oriented or are kind of in transition. So they exist at the end of residential blocks that, that kind of, that tee into some of our larger commercial corridors. They tend to be smaller lots. The buildings on them may be closer to the street. They may be back or a little bit of each, and thinking about standards that respond to that, that context. And then finally, creating a commercial node district and setting standards for that. The sixth article, which saw some edits, relates to the standards for our overlay districts. One, we took from Appendix A, the planned unit development overlay, made some edits, brought it into Chapter 50. Natural features protection already existed in Chapter 50, and we made some updates. We have talked about these on multiple occasions, but I will go over them. So there were no changes to the defined natural features and the standards associated with those, things like setback, that a building must be back from a water body or the top of a slope, or any landscape requirements associated with those areas for restoration purposes. The things that were updated related to the intent of the district. And as I said at the top, these things came out of use of the overlay standards by staff and by the Natural Features Protection Review Board and by the community. And the goal of these changes is to make it very clear what the NFP standards are intended to do. And so we divided it out, and first, to protect those defined features, and those are listed in the definition, or listed in the intent. Second, to be very clear that these overlay standards are intended to guide site development, balancing growth and redevelopment with the protection of our existing natural features. And that's one of the reasons why we put, like, check out NF, if you're NFP, at the beginning section in that how to use this code, and so you are figuring out right from the start whether or not these rules apply to you, so you can then be thinking about your site development plans with full information and making sure that you are taking those into consideration. And then finally, to create site designs that are responsive to the existing natural features and to minimize impacts to the extent possible. There were other changes to a couple of sections. One had to do with wellhead protection, which was referenced in natural features protection overlay. Wellhead protection used to exist in the zoning code. It was one of those things that public services wanted to update the rules, and we moved it out of the zoning code because it had a better place that it could be. It's in Chapter 39 of the municipal code. So there were changes made there. And there were some changes suggested to lot coverage. Now, initially, when we started this process in the spring, we had removed all of these lot coverage requirements from the overlay district. All of our base zoning districts have a lot coverage requirement, right? It's that percentage or ratio of land that is open and pervious to water to, compared to rooftops and driveways, so areas that are impervious. After having, after going through some meetings and having additional conversations and public comments, we added back in a couple of the sections that we, subsections that we had removed. And specifically, we kept in where to put, or where to guide the placement of these pervious areas on a site. So when you thinking about, when you're thinking about site development, anything that's pervious, anything that's grass or green or landscaped or native plants, any of, anything in that kind of big, big mix counts as pervious. And they can be spread across the lot in small pieces, landscape islands, front yards, backyards, side yards, et cetera. If you're natural features protection, it is important to keep those areas as large as possible to help provide additional space against those natural features. And so the goal is to either put them all in one area next to a natural feature, or at least put them in larger chunks if that is not, if that is not possible. Article seven and Article eight were ones that we, well, Article seven already existed in Chapter 50, and that's parking and loading. And we've talked about this before. Our previous Chapter 50 set of standards had both a minimum and maximum parking requirement. We removed the minimum and kept the maximum. We actually set two maximums. One, which takes into account areas that are on larger, faster streets without on-street parking, that have a more suburban context, a few opportunities for shared parking, and so we increased the maximum for properties in those areas. And we, in doing this, we also reviewed some of our parking standards that are listed by use and adjusted them accordingly. Landscape and screening was something that existed in Appendix A. We moved it over to Chapter 50 with some updates. These included updates related to the Community Sustainability Plan and Natural Features Protection. So, related to the Community Sustainability Plan, one of the changes made has to do with a tree canopy requirement. The Sustainability Plan has a goal of increasing in a consistent way the tree canopy across the city. Right now, we have some places it's high, some places it's low. And so a way to help impact that is to require trees to be planted with development, and it's set based on the size of the property, and again, tied to that goal in the Sustainability Plan. And we brought over the construction fencing, both the style and placement requirements that existed in natural features protection and brought them in to apply to the rest of the city and development. The landscape and screening section had not been updated in quite some time, so we had a landscape architect firm go through and review it to make sure that it read correctly and that it was using updated standards. And I, we did that between round, Draft Two and Three. Signs, again, exist in Appendix A, moving it over with this action. There are changes to signs for a few reasons. One is a Supreme Court case, Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, which was a big case from a few years ago, which has really changed or forced cities to change their sign codes, particularly as it relates to temporary signage. And so making sure that we are in compliance with, with that case, as well as a few other ones. We have had a lot of variances come through on signs over the years, and we want to make sure that we are, we have standards that are updated when we know that, you know, we're kind of hitting a wall each time with some of the standards. An example is in residential districts, and no sign types being allowed unless you're a church. But there are other uses that exist in a residential district that are legitimate to have signs, making sure that we're responding to that. Also, projecting signs, like those showed in the picture, are not allowed outside of downtown. We have lots of areas that are appropriate with the scale of the building, the size of the street, because that's really a more urban street type, tends to be up closer to the street, slower speeds, people walking, biking, transit, as opposed to, you know, zooming by 40 miles an hour where you need a bigger color sign for visibility. And so changes based on those street types and land use, overall, changes were kind of reviewed and made across all districts as we've been working on our streets. Finally, the lighting section. Exists in Appendix A, some very slight cleanup, and brought over to Chapter 50. We heard a lot of comment on this section, and though it is not something that we have been able, that we are able to include in this draft before you today, our sustainability planner, who joined us partway through the year, is doing research and understanding what other cities do as it relates to dark sky initiatives and other more sustainable practices for lighting to figure out what we can include in the code. There is certainly a balance here. It feels very easy to go grab standards from the model lighting ordinance that the dark sky organization has. I need to make sure that they're right for Kalamazoo, and I need to make sure that we can enforce them. And I'm not going to put things in the document that I can't administer or enforce. And so we're going to do a little more work in that area and hopefully come back this winter with some adjusted standards that meet those goals that we heard from the community and then the Sustainability Plan that we can also administer effectively for the community. Those are the sections. So I am happy to answer your questions. I can go back over any pieces, whatever this is the product of this body.
Thank you for the thorough presentation. Are there any questions of staff at this time?
I had one question on the NFP change to the pervious service requirements. The note where it said the areas should be contiguous or at least 20% of the total pervious surface area, if there were to be areas smaller than the 20% pervious surface, would those not count towards pervious surface or simply not be allowed?
Sure. So great question. So one could choose not to have those count, right? You can go above the number that we have here. If you cannot meet these requirements at all and have no other land to do so, and you can't meet one of the two options, then you would need to either redesign your site to meet the requirements, or if that is not possible because there's some physical hardship or unique character of the lot, then you would need to come before the zoning board of appeals to have that discussion.
Okay. I was just curious because the way that it read to me was like, if you had like a parking lot with landscape screening for like, just vegetation between parking spaces, like small green space areas like that, the verbiage that was written on the screen made it would appear that that would not be allowed?
Sure.
Where it might be required in other places in the code.
Right. So it's not that it's not allowed, it's just it wouldn't, you can have more, right? It's not, that's not saying you can't, you still have landscape requirements that are going to require you to do landscape islands and perimeter landscaping around your parking lot, but we're talking about that required, that required amount needs to meet these, needs to meet what's in this code. Anything above that can be, can be divided among the site to meet any other requirements.
Thank you.
Great. Other questions, staff? Okay. We'll have a chance later as well. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, we will open it up for public comment. Again, we'll ask you to stand over here on the right or your left to sort of queue up while you're waiting. You can kind of take that time to sign in on the sign-in sheet, and then please step forward. Limits your comments to three minutes. And then at the conclusion of our comments here in-house, we'll take comments from those watching online. That phone number again, 888-382-9556.
I'm Richard Stewart. I reside at 828 Portage Street in Southtown neighborhood. I'd like to bring to everyone's attention that staff is using Live Work 1, Live Work 2 as a way of misleading the public with terms. CC already allows living and working in the same property and zone, and Live Work 1 and Live Work 2 have an extreme oversupply with zero market demand. No MLS sales are represented that I can find in my real estate business. There is no value. CC, on the other hand, is a commercial zone, has high demand and an extreme shortage, which is driving prices up. It has one of the highest values for existing property owners. I would ask Mr. Milliken that if you are going to vote in 2,000 properties today, that you abstain yourself because you've included nine parcels between Lake and Stockbridge that you have been aware of, that my Southtown neighbors have been opposed to destroying our four acres of green space, and you continue to throw it in for rezoning. We are confident we are going to stop the funding for lift, but you are rezoning it, paving the way for the next developer to take over. We would like that removed. I would also like to bring to your attention that in my studying the 2,000 parcels, I saw a very distinct problem that the staff was, on purpose or not, in my opinion, causing a racist component. They were disproportionately affecting minority and disabled-owned property owners, existing property owners, by rezoning their parcels in blanket rezoning. And as I began to study that, existing owners of the Northside were rezoned LW1 and LW2. And so I studied what happened to those parcels. Before they were rezoned, the area was thriving with resales, but the minute the city comes in and rezones existing property owners of LW1 and 2, sales stop, values go down. Other developers buy them up at bargain basement prices. So the staff is not recognizing the diversity that exists now in these neighborhoods, and they are whitewashing these neighborhoods so they look nice on a map. And I don't have time to go into the details, but my FOIA was denied because I requested the 2,000 list of properties and property owners to give you this demographic data as proof. I was denied this data and referred to a color-coded map on your website, that I cannot give you that data. The city staff does not use MLS data. Why?
I live at 1132 Conant Street, and I'm here to talk tonight about the rezoning of the spot commercial zoning along the south side of Conant Street. I've lived on Conant Street for a long time, and I saw this firsthand be developed in 1952. There were three parcels that were rezoned in 1952. They were 814 Douglas, 1135 Conant, and 1117 Conant. These were all rezoned in 52 to accommodate a dairy, a restaurant, and a catering service. At the time, the neighbors spoke out against this tremendously, but the zoning went through. The parcel is still, it was rezoned for at the time Shopping District. It's now CC. What I want you to know is that the spot commercial zoning along the south side of Conant Street has caused irreparable harm to the neighborhood. If you go down to Conant Street and you look on Conant Street there, you look at the neighbors. If you go down to Conant Street and you look on Conant Street there, you look at the neighborhood, you will find it's 99% residential. I submit to you respectfully that this should not even have been rezoned in 1952, but it was rezoned to accommodate a businessman and that businessman is now gone. He left in 1984 and I really felt somebody from the city would come in 1984 and say, enough is enough is enough, but we've heard nobody from the city until tonight. And again, I would like to, I submit to you that this was a mistake in 1952. It hurt the neighborhood irreparably. It's hurt the neighborhood again today. And at the time, this businessman owned three parcels and all of them now are owned by three separate people. There is a duplex on the corner, the building is still there at 1135 Conant and, but 1117 that's also rezoned, CC is now a single family dwelling. So, what we ask you to do is put it back the way it was when, in 1952. And again, I say to you respectfully that I don't think this should have been rezoned in 1952. It's caused a lot of problems on Conant Street. Just to give you an example, when the businessman was there, the street was loaded with cars, trucks and even semis on this small residential street. There's commercial blight on that street and I ask all of you to come down and look at the 1100 block of Conant Street, survey the blight that's there and give us some answers of what can be done to clean it up. I thank you for your time tonight and for your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. My name is Krymis, K-R-Y-M-I-S. The Y is silent, so it's really just Krymis. My wife is over here. I have some questions. I think what you're doing is great. I read the clause, actually, I bought a whole book on the signs, all kinds of different signs for different zones. I didn't see anything about those feather signs, so I think the people out there are going to be very confused. If I'm going to build another office, I'm going to be calling you and they're going to be calling you too, which is going to put a lot of burden on you. There's so many different ways that signs can be up, down, whatever. So, question number one is, those people who have signs that are out of code, are they grandfathered? Oh, okay. Okay, okay. Let's say I have a property that's CC, commercial, and you decide to convert it to office, commercial, medical, dental and all that, then would I lose that CC? And then I guess the final thing is, when do we know if all this is going to be cast in stone or it's going to be taking a few more meetings to get it done? By the way, I'm an eye doctor and the font is too small to see from the back room. Thank you very much.
And I came down here about four or five years ago and the problem I had, I thought was taken care of, but I live on West Meach. And then I would like a book that y'all have about the laws, no jaywalking, no parking after two and all like that. They said that we signed them where they could do it. They stand in front of my house each and every day. They do whatever they want to do. They, if I tell them to move, they talk back to me. I have nowhere for my company to park and sometimes people come to clean my house, there's nowhere for them to park. And then when I ask them to move, they say it's public. Okay. So, I would like for someone to come out to my house and talk to me in front of them because I'm not going, I'm not going to have it. They used to have signs that says, no parking, no, no standing, no parking and no loud music, no parking after two. Now, I know we have to park, so I'll take that away, but the loud music, the parking after two, it's terrible. I'd be woke up at 1, 2 o'clock in the morning and the police be sitting across the street listening, looking. And I'll call, they say when they get somebody available, you're available, you're right across the street because there's a business across the street. So, you're in that parking lot and I'm looking at you. 4, 5, 6 o'clock in the morning, then they get to fighting, then they get to shooting and everything. I'm just trying to say that you do have a book, an old book, and I would like that book. No jaywalking, no parking, no standing, no loud music. So, if you would please find that book for me and I'm asking you please so I can look over it, but now they're saying we signed where they can stand in front of our house, they can talk, they can drink, they can do whatever they want to. So, I would like to talk to one of you guys because I've already called the police, so they're going to talk to me. But this is enough because this has been going on like for 20 some years and I'm tired of it. I would like to sleep at night. Thank you.
Hi. Barbara Fields. I'm a North Side resident. I live in one of the new homes they just built on Church Street and I was told that I couldn't have a back screen door due to the zoning and I just wanted to know why. Thank you.
My name is David Niesius and I live at 2221 Amherst Avenue. I'm president of the Oakwood Neighborhood Association and so 501(c)(3) Corporation. It's concerning our property at 2130 Parkview Avenue that was established as a memorial park and beach in 1943 by the citizens in the neighborhood. It's owned and maintained by the ONA according to our neighborhood plan and it's private for the use of all Oakwood Neighborhood property owners and the lake access adds to the value of the property in our neighborhood, just to give you the background. Now, the zoning, it was currently, before these changes, was split between commercial and RS5, okay? We had discussions with the city planners and they came up originally with all commercial. We had more discussions and they decided, well, RM15. And they have reasoning for that. Our reasoning is that the area surrounding Woods Lake is all RS5, the city park adjacent to us is RS5. The only RM15 is the small condo association that is adjacent to us. We simply want our property to be all RS5, you know, as it has been, 50% of it at least for quite some years. We don't seem to have had any resolution to that. That's what we, that's basically what we maintain. Do you have any questions for me? Okay. Thank you very much.
Hi. My name is Tina. I live at 310 Lake Street. This new zoning you are doing is only going to benefit developers. I know why. I don't know why we all keep wasting our time to come here, but you keep sending us letters, but you don't listen to the residents of Kalamazoo, especially in the poorer neighborhoods. We are, we bring our concerns and issues in front of all of you over and over. You do nothing to help or solve the problem. You only and always are about the money and building. See, I live in a floodplain area, as you already know, because I have been fighting to save our last green space in South Town neighborhood, Lake to Stockbridge, going on seven years now, which is in your new zoning map. I've asked you to fix the issues. No one's never fixed anything. This new zoning that you are doing on a green space, our last green space, which is Lake to Stockbridge, all this new zoning is going to let Hawthorne Projects build an apartment complex in a floodplain, in a sinking area where the ground is already sinking, where it floods all the time. See, in my neighborhood, it only takes one day of rain to flood out the streets and flood the whole neighborhood. Just one day of rain traps us in for at least four days and it even traps the police station. Then we wait and we watch our basements flood two to three times a year, but yet you still want to destroy our last natural green space, our last natural watershed, wetlands, trees and our animals' last home again. We are in the lowest point of Kalamazoo. We are in the bowl of Kalamazoo. We already struggle for no one helps us and yet you are rezoning again to build. This green space is a swampy area, absorbs a lot of water that would not, that would be sitting in the streets for days. And why has no one did an environmental study of this land that you are trying to rezon as an RM15 to build when you can build right across the street at the old DHS building? You can put as many buildings as you want there, but we need that green space to survive. And this rezoning is a sneaky way of changing the zoning so you can do whatever you want. Thank you.
Are there any other comments here in the audience? All right. How about online?
Good evening caller. You are on with the City of Kalamazoo Planning Commission for public comments for the proposed zoning map and commercial changes.
Hello. This is Karen Larson, 2313 Parkview Avenue in Kalamazoo, Michigan. Good evening. The climate emergency resolutions were adopted October 2019, recognizing the threat climate change presents to our citizens, city and natural world. We recognize the importance of protecting the long-term health and resilience of the environment and society. Nature-based solutions must be used to create a more resilient Kalamazoo. We must create a vision for healthy green city and implement climate actions called FOR in the Imagine Kalamazoo 2025. Kalamazoo is already feeling the effects of climate change. We need to find ways to equitably increase the tree canopy across the city. We need to create opportunities for people to intersect with nature and improve biodiversity. We need to design a built environment more integrated with wildlife. We need to update the zoning ordinance to support more biodiversity using the NFP standards as a guide for public good. These are not my words. They are direct quotes from the Resolution 2223 adopted 6/21/2022. This is from the city's sustainability plan. I attended all of the meetings to discuss the new zoning code for Kalamazoo. The two main comments consistent at each meeting were, you not weaken the NFP by removing language or intent. Secondly, add greater protection for our public green areas, whether asylum lake, coin sack, the city parks or the private beach for Oakwood residents. None of these should be zoned residential. If we are truly transparent about our Imagine Kalamazoo plan and the sustainability plan, it's time to have a green zone for these areas that give our residents places to relax and restore. It is time to include a green zone and refrain from lessening the language of the NFP. Thank you very much.
That appears to be the only caller.
All right, great. Any others? All right. Now, we will close the public hearing. Okay. Let's maybe go through a couple there. Can you speak to, I'm not familiar with the situation on Connell Street. Can you talk a little bit about that? No.
I don't, oh, there we go. Okay, great. Sure. So, Conant Street, and I will also pull up a map. Conant Street is off Douglas. It heads to the east off Douglas. It is a residential street in size and as the gentleman said, the vast majority of the uses on the street are residential. Three properties, however, are zoned community commercial. They are two residential properties, a duplex and a single family home and the, a single story commercial building that's mid-block, that is the dairy that was being referred to. With this action, we are choosing, we are proposing to return those properties back to residential. Again, that is what the rest of the block is, that's what's surrounding it and that is what the vast majority of the uses are in that area. And that's a lot of, I think that's a good example of a lot of the work that's being done through this, through this code update, you know, being able to look and see how the zoning code over time turned corners, was done very specifically for a project in the past that no longer is relevant. In many cases, residential or commercial zoning was taken around a corner down a residential street to potentially give more depth to the commercial properties as they potentially redeveloped and in most cases we found that they did not. And so we have commercial properties that are residential lots with residential homes on them, residential size lots, residential streets and making those changes. And so that is something that was, that is being done through this project. I can pull up a map too, if you would like me to, of that area. I guess I should use this one. Does that answer your question?
So, you are planning to rezon those as residential, not commercial in this current?
Correct.
Okay, perfect.
Correct. This map is not loaded correctly, so I will go to a different one. Let's see. The zoom button is gone. Do it on here. So, yeah, so that explains Conant Street and the changes that are proposed there. To answer questions of Mr. Krymis, and I hope that I am saying your last name close to correct, signs. If you have a sign that exists today, constructed under other rules, those signs are allowed to exist. There are provisions in the code for when you make those changes, gosh, nothing, there we go, for when you make changes, you know, if you're changing out the sign, if you're making it bigger, making it smaller, those are things that would trigger it coming into compliance. The second question was, if I have a district now and it goes away, do the standards associated with it go away? And the answer to that is yes. As just, as districts gets updated, you, the new standards would be applied. Of course, anything that was created under previous standards continues to exist in perpetuity unless major changes are being made to drastically increase the size or the intensity of the use that is there. Okay, here we go. Just to give you an example, this isn't the whole map, but this will give you an idea of what, this is Douglas Street and here's Conant. You can see those three parcels which are currently zoned commercial, proposing to be rezoned residential to match the residential that surrounds it. The last question that was asked is, when would these take effect? So, this body again is not the final decision-making body. Things are referred, you all make a recommendation to the city commission. The city commission then, over the course of two meetings, one which is just, was called a first reading, which announces that a change in ordinance is being proposed and sets the date of the public hearing. Then that public hearing happens at the date that is set and after that public hearing, the city commission has the opportunity to take action on the item. So, that could be October, that could be November. We're trying to figure out agendas and how we move forward based on what happens. We're trying to figure out agendas and how we move forward based on what happens this evening. The -- there was a discussion about State -- sorry, Stockbridge and Lake, and forgive me for scrolling through here, I'm just trying to pull up maps that would be helpful to us while we look. Those properties at Lake and Stadium and St. John or John Street are a mix of manufacturing and commercial right now. John Street, which is residential, is being proposed to be returned to residential, and properties along Lake Street, residential as well, many of them are, again, a mix of manufacturing and residential kind of left over. The project that was referenced is -- actually has nothing to do with this rezoning. It's a project that has been in the pipeline for a while and is in site plan development, meaning it is at the end of the development process, and it's being developed under the current zoning standards. So, this -- the rezoning here is not intended for development and would not impact that because they're already in site plan. And I apologize, I am making everybody seasick here as I -- there's Stockbridge. As I look around. There we go. Okay, so this is the area in question. Here is Stockbridge. Can you see that? And then Lake Street, and so, and John and Burdick, and you can see the residential lots by their size, and they are zoned CC, which, again, is designed as arterial commercial, regional shopping, and the gray is manufacturing. So, we'll take that, and we'll go to this map here, and I apologize that this is a little bit of a slow process. And you can see how the proposed changes, which take into account the fact that it's residential on many of those lots, that manufacturing does not exist in most of those locations anymore, and that Stockbridge is a mixed-use street that has both residential and commercial. Stockbridge and Burdick is a mixed-use area. Here it is, right here. So, the brown is residential, and the purple is Livework 1, recognizing that this is one of our urban areas just off downtown. Lots of the houses are built pretty close up to the street, some of the commercial is as well, and so that is why Livework 1 was chosen there. And again, you know, trying to repair the zoning by putting the other properties back into residential, because that is what they are, that's what they're sized for, and that's what the street is sized for. So, that explains -- that talks about that one. Let's now talk about Parkview and Oakland, which was one of the other parcels that was brought up in the public comment. Forgive me as I flip for both maps. And the map that I had that shows existing and proposed on there, for some reason, is not loading, so that's why I am flipping back and forth. Okay, so to orient ourselves, this is Oakland, and this is Parkview. This area is all currently zoned as Commercial Neighborhood 1. This area is designated as a commercial node in the master plan and is seeing changes accordingly. The property in question is this one right here, and I don't know -- I don't want to block it. So, it starts on Oakland and has frontage that goes down on Oakland, and that is commercial. This back half along Woods Lake is RS5, which is single-family residential, and then it comes up, and then this frontage here is commercial. We initially made it commercial when we did the map because of those frontages. And you can see in 2005, though we don't do the split-zone practice that was done here in 2005, it was done because the property has two contexts, right? It has a front context along the two fairly busy commercial streets right at the corner and the back context of Park and Lake properties. In having conversations with the residents in Oakwood, the commercial designation didn't sit right, so we talked about looking into residential districts. The proposal is to make it RM15, and so you can see here that property stands out a little more. It's kind of odd shaped as it hugs the commercial node property. RM15 was chosen because that is what the adjacent frontage is, as opposed to what exists behind. And so, RM15 allows single-family homes as well as other, some multifamily residential. It also allows parks. Parks are allowed in all of our districts, and you'll actually see that all of our parks, all the public parks, as well as the private preserve parks, are all zoned something, because everything has to be zoned something, and most of them are zoned residential, and that is a permitted use in a residential district. So, that is the rationale why, you know, the frontage and the adjacent districts, why RM15 was proposed for this location instead of RS5, which exists at the back of the lot. Do you have other questions for me related to the public comment or just in general?
Just a couple logistical things. I saw you talking to the lady --
Got names, addresses, and phone numbers.
For Church Street, and then if someone can make sure public safety goes and speaks to Ms. Wright about her situation.
Correct.
And to -- that would be fantastic. Those are the other logistical things I had. Were there any other clarifications? Yes.
Could -- do you anticipate the effective date of the regulations being the day it's voted on?
That's a great question. Thanks. Ordinances take effect 10 days after they are approved. So, they are -- that's law. They're -- it's 10 days after the city commission approves them. Thirty days?
I believe zoning is 30 to allow time for --
That's a different question. What you're talking about, I believe, is a different question that relates perhaps to appeals, and we can let the city attorney answer that question. Ordinances take effect 10 days after approval. All ordinances.
Any other clarifying questions? Yes, sir.
I have a question. So, I heard that all parks that are zoned residential on the map currently?
In the city, most of the -- I'm not going to say every city park is zoned residential. There might be a couple that are commercial, but I believe they are nearly all zoned residential. Residential as a classification allows for parks, and if you look at our zoning map, this is the existing zoning map. Sorry to make you seasick. That was too far. You can see, it's hard with the small lots, the vast majority of the city is zoned residential. Actually, the vast majority of the city is zoned single-family only residential. And so, it would not be unexpected to have schools and parks within that zoned, what everything else around it is zoned.
So, here's my question. Can a neighborhood, community, can they actually put or attach the NFP process to their neighborhood or to that residential district?
So, NFP can be mapped on a property if it has existing features. So, NFP defines a series of features: water bodies, wetlands, slope, single trees, tree -- multiple trees, tree coverage. It has to have a feature in order to have NFP mapped on it. You don't put those standards if it doesn't have a feature, because the intention is to provide protection around those features.
Any other questions? All right, well, then I think we're ready for a motion, so we can open up discussion. Again, we are making a recommendation to the city commission, so I'll be looking for a motion to make a recommendation to approve the city commission the text amendments to Chapter 50 zoning ordinance and Appendix A zoning and updates to zoning map. Any takers?
I move we recommend the city commission adopting the text amendment changes to the zoning map.
We have a motion by Patelco. Is there a second?
I will second the motion.
Second by Burgess. All right. Let's open it up for discussion. What are our thoughts? Questions, concerns, ideas?
Well, I'd just like to say, just to get things started, that I really appreciate the city staff's efforts in regard to the public outreach and the meetings they've had and the revisions that they've undertaken. I know that there's been some, especially, for example, as mentioned earlier, the auto-related uses where public input was incorporated into the later drafts, and I think they've done a really good job of bringing these changes sort of slowly and deliberately with enough time for folks to voice their concerns and for changes to be made. And so, I think the rezoning looks really solid.
Thank you. Any questions or issues? Yes?
I was just also going to say, at the same point, the response that we've gotten from the community at this meeting and previous meetings also gives me further confidence in the rezoning of the ordinance itself, in that it has been thoroughly evaluated, not just by those who propose it or approve it, but those who it affects and those who are living with it on a day-to-day basis. It gives me confidence that we have heard the issues that will arise for the most extent.
All right, thanks.
I would add that it's very clear that the proposed zoning changes that we propose to recommend are consistent with the master plan in that they, almost by definition, they are chosen to align with the master plan and do so well.
Good. Other items?
Well, I heard there were five meetings and presentations to this board, and I just wanted to say I've only amended two, so I really appreciate all of your work on this as well, joining the board later, and I liked the way that the presentations and information always go back to the strategic plan and the criteria, and I think the fact that this project seems to meet that and where there were gaps in knowledge, those gaps were filled with outside expertise or public comment, and I think that all of that outreach process and research and development went into making a really good document.
Anything else? All right, just to tie the loop, any concerns or questions?
I was going to mention that many of the concerns that we've heard about the ordinance changes, specifically the commercial changes to the ordinance, bring up the question -- you pointed out the cohesiveness with the master plan, and I think that is pretty consistent throughout these changes. And a lot of the concerns that we've heard kind of border on the extents of our power as the planning commission and the zoning code's power as a body of enforcement for zoning and where it overlaps with environmental protection and stuff like that. There are extents to which the zoning code can and should address concerns of environmental safeties, and for the most part, just being a developmental code. Power can and should be limited in some of those situations, so I think we also need to keep that in mind as we look to incorporate changes into it, that we are staying within the limits of our power as a board and the zoning code as a ruling document.
That's good. As someone told me once, zoning is here to regulate development, not prohibit development. That just can't be done, not through zoning. There are other tools that are much more capable and better tools for doing that. All right, well, I have a couple of things to say. First, thank you to staff for listening, for organizing, for managing this process. Most communities would hire a consultant to do this at significant expense to the community. We did not, and so, thank you for that and taking this burden on, all the staff. Thank you to commissioners. This is not easy work. It's testament to the large stack of papers up here. It's likely not what you signed up for when you volunteered for this, but this is the real work of the planning commission, and so, thanks for sitting up here and taking this on. Thank you to the community for being engaged, all of the members throughout the process, all the way back to February. There was a lot of engagement, and so, that is appreciated, and it's critical to getting to a better and more refined product that's reflective of the community. We know it's not what everybody wants, and it's not exactly perfect for every person, but that is an impossible goal, and I'm proud of the process that we used to get here, and I'm proud of the work that we've done, and I'm proud of the final product. We said from the beginning that we would present a draft and hold several meetings and refine that draft based on the feedback and the comments and the questions, and we have done that. This is our fourth draft that we are reviewing and shortly voting on this evening, and that has gone through several iterations, as you can see in all of the red ink that's on that document. And so, I'm very confident in that process, and I'm glad that we held true to our word when we said that at the beginning. As we said throughout this evening, these amendments are consistent with Imagine Kalamazoo, which served as a framework for the work and a catalyst for the amendments. It also meets all the standards for approval in the ordinance that were discussed earlier. So, you know, good work, everyone, and good work to the community for putting this forward. And I would just say to the city commission, if there's any questions, please feel free to contact us as this moves along in the process. Anything else? Okay. Can we have a roll call vote?
Burgess?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
DeSensio?
Yes.
I apologize. Harrison? Milliken?
Yes.
Patelco?
Yes.
Swan?
Yes.
All right. Thank you again to everybody for your engagement. This will go in October to the city commission.
I would imagine at least the first reading will be done in October. It depends on agendas, but yes, that's the goal.
Wonderful. Okay. No discussion action items. Is there a city planner report?
No.
No? Okay. We received a site plan list, and we'll move right to public comments. Again, these are public comments on non-agenda items. Again, we'll ask that you hold to the three-minute limit. Please come up, state your name and address, and share your thoughts.
I have one more. I have a couple of comments. Christina, why did I get a postcard in the mail if you weren't rezoning my area? And I do flood. And why are you destroying a natural green space to build a natural green space on a parking lot at the old DHS building? Why would you destroy a God-made green space? God made this space, not humans, not the city, not the planning commission or none of you. God made it. Why would you take this green space away to build another green space right across the street at the old DHS building? I don't understand. Why not put your apartments there and leave our green space alone? Thank you.
Any other public -- all right.
Name's Judy Huxman, and I live in the Oakwood neighborhood. Maybe this is the end comment. I really like my site. I really like my sidewalks. I can walk on those at night safely, and it really has uplifted the quality of the neighborhood. It's clean and neat, and people are enjoying them.
My name is Tom. This is kind of for future zoning talks. City planning just said that residential districts can include parks, but, but I just quickly read through all the districts, and it doesn't say that explicitly. It does say public and civic uses, but that's vague and doesn't limit development. So I'm here to keep green space and other preservation districts options on your radar for future zoning code changes. Currently, there are zero examples of districts like this in Kalamazoo zoning map, though we do have a loosely related example called public. It isn't actually applied to a single parcel, so it isn't an example that can refute the need to develop truly useful options for parcel owners. In previous meetings, I've shared real-world examples from other cities, and I believe examples like these can guide and inform future conversations. I know that examples I have shared aren't exactly like Kalamazoo, but that shouldn't prohibit us from exploring them. And I, I hope that city planning, as they've said in previous meetings, look forward to thinking about these district options in future meetings. So I'll be referencing them in the future, so you can rely on that. It's also directed to a recent view from the, oh, let me come back to that. As I understand it, city planning will also be reviewing our existing manufacturing zoning language. As residents continue to suffer from the stench and health effects of hydrogen sulfide emissions from GPI and the water treatment plant, with the caveat that I see in the recent view from the curb that the city is investing in the water treatment plant. So that's good news, but GPI is another concern. So I encourage you to really focus on language that dictates manufacturing proximity to our community. And this includes thinking about wind patterns and not just geographic proximity. As we can see that you can live many blocks away in different directions, and you can still suffer from the smell and toxicity. And just to hammer that point home, I've got some numbers, although you, each of you probably see these numbers on a weekly basis anyway, but let's see here, I've got June 21st coming right from the one closest to the GPIs, 26.9. Again, the Michigan limit is 1.4, I think, parts per billion. August 15th, 29.9. And August 24th, 30.1. So we can just go on and on with examples like this. So this is an ongoing issue, and it can be hopefully addressed in manufacturing district talks. Thanks.
Seeing no one else getting up, is there anyone online?
No calls.
Okay. City Commission Liaison, Mr. Patel.
There, there we go. Hey, good evening, everyone. I wanted to take a moment to welcome the newest face on the planning commission. Good evening, Commissioner Curtis, thanks for being here. Wanted to provide a, well, first I just wanted to say tonight is a big deal. It is a culmination of over a year's work on city staff, community, and you folks as well. So just, you know, to kind of soak that in about this is a, a big deal tonight, and I wanted to thank you all for your work in that process and the community's work in that process. I wanted to take a minute to talk about community input. And each, every two years, we take part in a biennial survey that the community gets to participate in. We receive hundreds of responses to that. We also did a survey that had a couple thousand individuals from the community to tell us how they wanted us to use the COVID federal ARPA dollars as well. And one of the major priorities was housing. And I won't go into the other four things, but I want to give an example of how that response and prioritizing what's important to this community and housing and the housing crisis, and how in just the last month, what we've done for housing. So at our last meeting, we invested $1.5 million on 48 rental home units for those with housing vouchers, so they could have better accessibility. We invested $700,000 to help build eight single-family home units in our community. We accepted a Brownfield grant to help make sure a senior complex with 64 units can be built, and also a pilot, allowed a pilot usage there as well. We approved a million dollars of gap financing to a 70-unit senior complex that will go up on the north side. And then we also approved what's called neighborhood enterprise zone policy and a new, an NEZ district downtown to make housing available as well. And, and that's just in the last month. And so that's truly a manifestation of the community's vision and prioritization of how they want us to spend our funds and devote our resources to make things happen. And that's just one of those five priorities. And so I just wanted to share that with you. I'm very proud of that. And the thing that I'm particularly proud of, about each of those things that I mentioned, it's not going to disturb a single green space to make those possible. So how cool is that? And those things I rattled off are 190 units between homes, rental units, in our community in just one month's time that we, as city staff, have made possible in our community. So that is really awesome. Also wanted to just take a moment, if you haven't already, familiar with View from the Curb? Great publication, I love this thing. I completely nerd out on this thing. But it's really neat, you heard Tom talk about this as well, but there's a really great focus here on the, the aggressive steps that the city of Kalamazoo's been taking from our water reclamation plant to improve air quality. And definitely encourage you to check that out. But it even has really interesting things like, hey, where do your leaves go when you put them on the street curb and they get picked up? How do those get used? But it also has information and dates and everything that you need to know about utilizing city services as well. And then lastly, I just wanted to make sure, to emphasize to everyone, we are back to school season. Please slow down a little bit, watch out for our young people when they're getting ready to go to school in the morning and go home at the end of the day. But otherwise, again, wishing you a great evening and hope you have a great month. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, planning commissioner comments? Any planning commissioner comments? Commented out? Nothing? Nobody? I'm not sure I even have anything. But just to repeat, that was, that is a big deal tonight, congratulations. And yeah, thanks for all the hard work. Thank you.
Sorry. Real quick, before we adjourn, a reminder that we had to reschedule our October meeting. So it is going to be Monday, October 9th. It was, it should be October 5th, but there is a training that staff will be attending that day that makes that a challenge for staff. So we have moved it to October 9th. I don't, you know, if there are no cases, we don't have any business, then we will cancel it. This has already been posted online on the city website, and applicants are aware of the change in deadline, but I don't know that we announced it recently at this board. So October 9th, Monday, will be the October Plan Commission date.
I have a question for you. With that being Indigenous People Day, will the city actually be open that day?
Yes, the city is open that day.
Good, good clarity. Anything else? All right, with that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.